The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, a nation under God, invisible, with the reading of justice.
Uh, District Clerk, I just want to announce that the oath of office for our two new board members, Mr. Bob Leoli and Mr. Fiskus, are on file. And the next order of business would be to take nominations for the president of the school board for the sixteen seventeen school year.
I'd nominate Mary Ellen Claus.
Second.
Any further nominations? Hearing none after no objections, we will cast one ballot for Mrs. Claus.
Thank you.
We'll now take nominations for vice president for the school board.
And I would like to nominate Mike Pukes. Second.
Any further nominations? Again, hearing none, we will cast one ballot for Mr. Pukes for vice president for the sixteen seventeen school year.
Okay. Thank you very much.
The only other item would be the Board of Education Code of Conduct.
Do we have a one that we can all sign?
Yes.
Okay.
So I've got one here and I'll pass it around.
Have signatures? And this will be placed on this district's website as well after everyone has read them and signed them. Okay. Uh, need a motion to approve the agenda for the evening.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, the two thousand sixteen seventeen appointments and required resolutions. Uh, Rick, would you like to just go through them?
Sure. Um, I'll highlight the, uh, the ones that are different also. You know, at this meeting, uh, we're required to appoint architects, the attorneys, the census administrator, the clerk, the banks for deposit, um, all of our external and internal auditors. We also have a vacant position for our audit committee. Um, Mrs. Claus and Mr. Stock are on it and we do need a third member.
I believe James.
Yes.
Um, indicated that he would be interested in serving on that committee.
Great.
Any board members permitted to attend as well?
Great, we will put that in. Um, going on to page two, the extra classroom advisors, uh, the middle school, excuse me, central treasurer is new to the position this year, uh, due to a retirement. Our internal claims auditor, we were using Erie One Bosie's last year. Mrs. Colari who was our auditor for, I think, seven or eight years, uh, who retired is coming back to do that service and we had talked to the board about it in the past. Uh, everything else is pretty standard on here with the, I do want to note that, uh, this is just the second year, you know, Dr. Vaughn had retired. Uh, Kelly Nab is a nurse practitioner, she's taken over his spot, working along with, uh, Dr. Chuck Fransimoen, who worked very well this year and we'd like to keep her on for the coming year. And then the only other item that was different from last year is the annual professional development plan that, uh, we do need to move at the re-armed meeting each year.
Okay, did anyone have any questions on the appointments or about the professional development plan? Okay, can we do just one?
Yes.
Okay. A motion to approve the appointments and required resolutions as well as the professional development plan.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, approval of the meeting minutes and executive session meeting minutes, June thirteenth two thousand sixteen. Any corrections or questions? Nope. Okay, a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. No superintendent's report?
Um, we do have two things. First, if everyone at your places has a set of note cards that reflects student artwork.
Hmm.
We started doing this a couple of years ago and I want to give kudos to Sheila Romero who puts together the note cards along with George Gillum, our, uh, high school art teacher. So these are for the use of the board. We also send a set to the parents of the kids who were chosen for the artwork. Uh, and I'll just throw in that Sheila also does the calendar, which is coming up, and she also maintains the website for us. So she needs a raise, Mrs. Claus.
Thank you, Sheila. A round of applause for Sheila. I like the fact that the artist's names are on the back of the card.
Yes, the kids' names are on the back and if you run out of note cards, we can get you some more.
Okay.
Uh, they're very cute this year, elementary oriented footballs card.
Okay.
Second, Rick has provided for the board a bound copy of the, uh, building condition survey and he's gonna kind of run through this report which is due, is it every five years, Rick?
Yes.
And also Rick can give the board a kind of s- simple update on the project, especially the fields. So, Rick, you're on.
Sure. The, uh, the building condition survey that you have is required, as Dr. Hicks mentioned, every five years. The condition survey tends to be very proactive as opposed to just identifying things that are at failure or very close to failure. Matter of fact, the last condition survey, five years ago, is the basis for our current capital project. So in our current capital project, there's about twenty-eight million dollars worth of maintenance items really, roof work, HVAC items, some electrical, but things that are actually needed and we're really past that point of failure. Um, the current one that you're looking at takes about, I would say, twelve to fourteen million from that original survey that wasn't done with the project and puts it into this one, plus a few other things. So the, the items in here, I would say, are not items we need to react to at this time. I think it would be something we want to visit at the end of the current project and see where we are with them. But a lot of things in here are, uh, for example, any roof that by the end of this five-year cycle, which is twenty twenty, ends up being twenty years old, is in here for replacement. Again, being proactive, not that they're leaking like Ledgiew was, but we've replaced the one we did. Um, for example, there's an elevator in here for over half a million dollars. It's the only way they could make the rifle range handicap accessible if we desire to do that. So those are the kind of items in here. We do have lighting, windows in here. Again, the architect looks at windows that are thirty-five years old and things like that and says, you, you can replace them. Now, I think you need to replace them. Windows have a very long life and they also, uh, are very difficult to justify for an energy performance contract. It takes too long for the payback for windows. Lighting, however, is something different. You know, the not-too-distant future, we can show the board, um, some performance contracts based solely on short-term energy savings, things like lights. Uh, but they're all in here. Every light in the district that isn't one of the most energy efficient or in the current project to be done within the next two years is in here. The other thing that you'll see in here are parking lots. The architect puts a full-depth replacement for all parking lots in here because New York State will fully A-deck. However, most of the time, that's not really what's needed. Most of the time, you just need to take off the top, you grind it, you replace the, the, uh, the highest level base and then resurface it. So a lot of that we do in our yearly, um, maintenance projects. Um, hard-wired carbon monoxide, uh, detectors are in here at a very, very expensive cost. Um, we are within all of the mandates. The mandate to have them hard-wired is twelve years from now. And, um, Brian Logan, who's, uh, he's building some grounds, his plan is just to piecemeal that in through his budget over time and get those done. So those are the kinds of things that are in here. Um, certainly when you, when you look at a report, uh, the, the idea of the building condition survey is that an architect, an engineer, goes through literally every nook and cranny of every single space that you have for safety, both inside and out. So that's what they did. Um, this is the third year, third set of five years that Gordon Jones, uh, and Associates have done it. And they've done a nice job, I think. The actual building condition survey, those of you who were, um, part of the committee that did this project, is as big as those old-fashioned things called phone books.
Phone books.
And, but this, so this is basically the executive's, uh, summary.
So really, there's three pools of money that we can start to utilize if and when the board wants to start to attack some of the things on the building condition survey. One is just the general fund money that we have for repairs and maintenance. It's not a lot, but some of these things can get done in the course of a school year through those funds, mostly through the Buildings and Grounds Office. Second, um, this could serve as the precursor to another capital project at some time in the future. And then third, we're able to reserve some money for repairs. And Rick has spoken with the board about, um, establishing a reserve for replacing the athletic fields and starting to fund it now. Because, what is it, a twelve-to-fifteen-year shelf life on those, Rick?
Yes.
Uh, and, and start to fund it with some surplus now so that in twelve to fifteen years, we'll have enough. We can also put some additional money in it for other things that are in the building condition survey. Sometimes the most cost-effective way to do things is through a project because we get state aid back. Um, sometimes the most efficient way to do it is just through regular cash out of reserves or in the general fund. So we can bring this up at the August retreat, we can dive into a little bit more. If you have any concerns about anything, we can get Brian Logan to give you kind of a plan for how we're going to attack this.
We do have set up for the, um, August board meeting, uh, Brian and Dan Dros, the clerk of the works, we're going to do a, a PowerPoint presentation for the project, kind of give you, you know, at that time, I'll give you a quick brief update, but we'll know much more, um, at the end of the summer on how we're doing timeframe on, on each of the specific items. At that time also, he can address any questions that we might have regarding this building condition survey.
And even though we are spending thirty million dollars in mostly renovations to our buildings to make sure that all these things are taken care of, we could have spent a hundred million to take care of the entire building condition survey. So, you know, this is gonna be out there, it's prudent for the board to continue to look at it for big items, for us to have a plan, especially if we want to use reserve money. It's one of the things that the Comptroller's Report will say that Rick will talk about also.
Very briefly, um, with regards to, uh, specifically handicap accessibility, um, you know, with, with such a big-ticket item like the, like the, um, elevator that you're talking about, is that something that we can defer indefinitely unless there's someone who actually comes to us with a specific need and then we have to address it at that particular time or?
That's, that's pretty much what it is.
Okay.
There's no mandate to do anything until we are mandated.
And then we're under the clock and?
Yes.
Okay.
And, uh, you know, we, we also had looked at, uh, because this was obviously an item in the, in the last building condition survey, there are also, um, avenues to relocate.
Okay.
Should, should really, we, we decide we want to maintain a rifle range and?
And that may be worth.
Five hundred thousand is best spent in another way.
Okay.
Okay.
Very briefly then, on, on the project, uh, you know, we've got three turf fields basically. We've got the football field, we've got the baseball diamond, and then the softball diamond, which ends up being the multipurpose field. The baseball diamond is, is pretty much done. It really looks great. Um, the contractors haven't turned it over to us officially. Um, that will just be hopefully another week or so, but it, it looks very good, everything went very well there. The, um, multipurpose field, they ran into a couple of issues with some of the larger boulders that when they did all the test drillings, they just missed, you know, and they only missed them because you don't test drill literally every five inches. So they've got some boulders that are too big and too high to the surface to ignore. So they're coming up with a plan. One of the plans that they're talking about right now is to just raise the field and put a little, um, grade to the ends of it. And that looks like the best plan right now. We're working with the contractors to see if, if a boulder removal plan is also feasible. But right now, that looks like the best one. That will push that field though, um, at least until the end of September. The, uh, football field, the, the plus to that is that they could concentrate a little bit more on the football field. Football field is going very well. You know, we had a, uh, a date of the end of September for the football field. I just met with, uh, Brian this morning and he said they're pushing it up to, uh, I think he said September fifth. Now, that would be great if, if that comes to, to pass. Again, uh, July eleventh, you know, the next six weeks are gonna be very important. So, you know, at, every time we, you talk to the contractor, all these deadlines are, are, you know, moving targets in many ways. We were going to, um, put in the new fueling station at the bus garage, all the software and everything that was needed. That was supposed to be the last week in June. That didn't happen. It's gonna be next week. Uh, you know, so there'll be, um, there'll be a lot of, uh, blacktop and things like that that'll be dug up. So there'll be some buses that, uh, will most likely be kept at Akron. Uh, they have the facility in, uh, instead of putting them, just parking them at one of our sites that isn't set up to be watched and to be maintained, we thought it made a lot of sense just to cart a bunch of them over there. Uh, we don't need to move more than about half of them, but that's what we'll probably end up doing. And it's probably just a week period, once they really get started, till, till that will happen. In the meantime, we will fuel, uh, excuse me, what we need at Akron also.
And what was the reason for the delay?
Uh, maybe there was just, there was no special reason for the delay. You know, you order parts, you get the software, and, you know, until everything is, is together, you don't want to start and piecemeal it, so it takes longer to do.
Okay.
The, uh, the high schools, Sheridan Hill, Harris Hill, all of the HVAC and electric work that's being done as of today is on schedule. Um, you know, so we, we don't really have any, any issues with any of that. The, uh, cameras for those three buildings, internal and external cameras, um, probably, you know, we would have liked to have them all done by the end of the summer, delivery times and, and wiring and stuff like that, probably gonna be done second shift, uh, through September. We hope to have all of that done October first.
So the, um, dry weather really hasn't changed the schedule over, you know, in a significant way, hasn't accelerated or anything for the outdoor work?
No, not yet. Uh, you know, like I said, that, you know, the next six weeks will be telling, you know, for, for the law on you on submarine, but we'll contact you down.
Right.
Okay.
Should I mention the report, no?
Yeah.
So the, uh, the other thing would be, every five years, uh, New York State Comptroller's Office comes into each school district and they, they take a look at some, uh, financial aspect of the district. They were in a few months ago here and, uh, we did give you a copy of the draft report and the, uh, the district's plan that's attached to the report. Nothing changed from the draft that we gave you. Uh, the comptroller mentioned, uh, several things. Finally, they, they looked at short-term borrowing, which they had a lot of good suggestions on, and we most likely can, um, uh, maintain, uh, not running a tax anticipation note for this year. And as, as that October date comes, you know, we'll be checking the software that we have, our daily financial balances, and, and if we're good, we, we can save a little bit by not borrowing those funds. Uh, the report is on our website, uh, as required, and, uh, we'll put in the, uh, a little word in the Clarence B. on the twentieth.
If I remember correctly, the, the, the interest rate on those, on those notes is, is historically very, very low though, right?
Yes, we, um, last one we borrowed was, um, point three-seven of one percent. And that's why, um, using it as an insurance policy for late state aid payments and, and things like that was a practice the district got into for many years.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Do we need a motion to accept it?
Uh, it's?
I don't think you have to resolve it, but it has to have been presented to the board in public, so.
It'll be in our minutes that it was presented.
Okay. Okay. Uh, no correspondence. We move to our first public comment session and I'd like to draw to everyone's attention, we have, uh, at the site over there, frequently asked questions about school board meetings, uh, procedures, types of questions that can be asked, what happens in different parts of our meeting and executive session, uh, it's a good reference. We also have it available on the district website for anyone that has any questions or would like some clarification on it. And so I will encourage anyone that has any questions to step to the microphone and give first a name and address so that we can get back to you if you need some follow-up information. Okay. Personnel, Dr. Patak.
Thank you, Mrs. Claus. Number of items, a request for leave of absence, a request for reinstatement to active employment, some informational items, uh, again, we use this, we use the board agenda to, uh, to keep accurate records in the personnel office and that's why we do this. Uh, various appointments, including part-time. Uh, pleased to say that we're able to secure two probationary teachers for the coming year, uh, one in the area of English and the other special education. And, uh, Ms. Jill, Mrs. Jill Prespazniak is in the audience this evening, uh, our special education recommendation. Uh, compensation for teachers on special assignment over the summer, appointing a mentor for the upcoming school year, and again, we do these on an individual basis as we appoint new probationary teachers or new teachers in general, uh, we, uh, assign mentors. Extracurricular, you have the fall sports recommendations this month, they are for approval from Mr. Kazupski. We also have the Clarence High School, uh, activities, uh, here for approval. Regents review instructors for this coming August, uh, individuals to serve as practitioners and scorers of the two thousand sixteen, uh, August sixteen Regents exams, academic support instructor, summer orientation program for incoming freshmen, and this is just in addition, you approved the bulk of the individuals at the June meeting. Summer school appointments, teachers in, in our summer school program this year, summer s- uh, special education services, some additional summer curriculum projects. In addition, again, you appointed the majority of individuals, uh, at the June meeting for the instructional leadership team and we have an additional individual here, and that's it.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions on P one through P eight? Nope? Okay, then a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, and second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Nine?
Non-instructional personnel, uh, appointments. Uh, as you know, we, uh, created a new position here for, uh, permanent substitute, uh, registered nurse. We also have some, uh, additional individuals being appointed as a result of retirements. We had fourteen non-instructional retirements this past year, so, uh, we're slowly working on replacing those individuals. Uh, we also have, uh, employees, uh, working this summer, bus attendants, for example, as well as the bus washers, and we have one, uh, additional appointment on the addendum for the technology office.
Okay, any questions on P nine? Everyone get a chance to look at the addendum as well? Okay, a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
All right, special needs and student activities.
Um, I'll review all of them because there's a couple of ones that are specific to the kind of reorganization of the meeting. Uh, there were seventy-six or seventy-nine Committee on Special Ed meetings. There's also an addendum for one at your table. Uh, these were some of the difficult, one of, some of the ones that take more time that happened over the course of the last couple of months of the school year. Uh, there was only one Committee on Preschool meeting because that usually wraps up in late May. Then, for the school year, there's three additional special ed appointments or four additional special ed appointments. There's the appointment of everyone who sits on the Committee on Special Education or Committee on Special Education, which would include teachers, administrators, uh, and authors. There's the, just in case we have to go to an impartial hearing, which we try to avoid at all costs, but just in case we had to, the board approves the list of impartial hearing officers for this region. Um, there's also the approval of a surrogate parent. Sometimes a parent can't make a meeting and the surrogate parent would sit in and protect that parent's rights in a CSE. And then there's the approval of who can make the initial designation for referral, and most of that is all legal. The parent can always make an initial designation, but also the school administrators or a teacher could make a designation to refer to the Committee on Special Education. So that's the special ed stuff for this month.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve all of them. S one through S six. Action?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Uh, for the next section, uh, it's worth noting that we're probably the only school district in Erie County who chose a different kind of fill for our turf fields. Uh, most people choo- chose chrome rubber. Uh, we, with our committee and also with the Board of Education, were uncomfortable with chrome rubber and there, it had been linked in some ways to, um, carcinogens. So we used, what's the official name for it, Rick?
Uh, EPDMs. They're, uh, it's a virgin rubber product.
There you go. So our fill will be the virgin rubber that doesn't have any of the, you know, white wall radial stuff on there that was cancer-causing.
Okay.
Uh, so I believe we're the very first field in Western York to have the infill be EPDA rubber. So there's a little bit of information on that for you. Um, also, for the team appointments, um, can we, can I just have you go through, Mary Ellen, what you have for the ECASB team appointments?
Yes. Uh, the voting, uh, there'd be myself and Mike as the alternate. The delegate assembly rep is Tricia with Mike as the alternate. Budget and finance is, uh, Matt and the alternate is Dennis. Uh, legislative team is Dennis and the alternate is Matt.
Great.
And the schools, if I wrote this down correctly, uh, James for Clarence Center, Harris Hill is Tricia, Matt is Sheridan Hill, Dennis is Ledgiew, James is Clarence Middle School, Tricia is Clarence High School, uh, Sepse is Mike, and I am CSEF, but all board members are free to attend meetings, any one of the meetings at any time.
I think you said James from the middle school, it's John, I think, that's the middle school.
Okay.
So those don't necessarily need action?
Right.
As long as the board's all in agreement on that.
Right. And it'll be posted so people know who will be the, okay.
Okay. Um, there are some field trips. Traditionally, we give you a heads-up for upcoming field trips this year in this month and mostly from the high school, the clubs and organizations that'll be requesting field trips in the future, it's on a memorandum in there. Then there are three field trips for your consideration to approve. They're all traditional and they're ones that happen, um, annually. The first is the corral, uh, going to the Fredonia Lodge to perform, and I think there's, it's like a, uh, like a experience for kids to get, um, staff development, that's not the proper word, instruction, um, for themselves with maybe federally their advisor. That's one. Second is the traditional eighth-grade field trip to Washington DC from the middle school and the third is the traditional field trip to Quebec from the, um, Spanish and French clubs at the middle school.
Okay. So we need to approve the field trips. So that would be B fi- uh, B four through B seven. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Do we need to approve?
The what? The first two? Well, I thought this was the per- the turf information, it's not really action, it was just information?
Yeah, that just.
Okay. 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 All right, so we've come to the second public comment session. Okay. Uh, schedule of meetings. For you, the next meeting we have actually is our summer retreat, which will be August eleventh, has in conference room B from five-thirty to eight-thirty. And then our joint town beating, uh, joint meeting with the town of Clarence, uh, representatives on August twenty-ninth, followed by our regular board meeting and then we'll be into September and it'll be back to school.
I think we're away actually, starting in September at one of the buildings.
Uh, yes, no, well, it'll Yes, no, it says September 19th, Clarence High School Lecture Hall.
I thought it was supposed to be Harris Hill.
I'm sure it's Ross Harris Hill.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, we're starting a little earlier this year with the trips around the buildings. So September's Harris Hill.
Okay. And then it'll be back here at the high school. Okay. And we have the 97th Annual NISBA Conference will be held in Buffalo this year, October 27th through the 29th. So it'll be a busy fall. And you'll let us know the date for the new teacher luncheon?
Yes.
Okay. August 25th?
August 25th.
Okay, August 25th. Okay. Any other information, share? Nope? Okay, then we need a motion to adjourn to executive session for leading to an appointment evaluation of a particular person and discussion of litigation strategy.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay. Have a good evening.